Please either turn it off or silence it. So, we will convene a joint work session with Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and the Oregon City Commission for Wednesday, September 19th is about 5:30. We're going to call the roll or we're just going to get started?
We were going to go around.
Alright, so however you would like to proceed, Ms. Ruff.
Let's start over here to my left and go around.
Troy Bolinger, Parks and Rec.
Karen Moore, Parks and Rec.
Renata Mengeberg, City Commission.
Lisa Novak, Parks and Rec.
Mike Mitchell, Parks and Rec.
Nancy Ives, City Commission.
Dan Holiday, Mayor.
Chris Cook, Parks and Rec.
Brian Shaw, City Commissioner.
Doug Inge, Parks and Rec.
Roger Polditides, Parks and Rec.
Sean Dashler, Parks and Rec.
That's it?
Okay. So, we have discussion item, Parks Deferred Maintenance and Funding Discussion. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Commissioners, and Advisory Committee members. So today, we have before us a discussion in regards to the Parks and Recreation funding, specifically looking at our deferred maintenance backlog, as well as our ongoing operational maintenance of the department. We have a lot of information to cover tonight, and quite a few slides, so I'll get through the full presentation, and then if there's, I'm sure there'll be questions and conversations that'll happen, we can go back to any of the slides and further discuss them, but once we get through it, it'll make it a little bit easier to kind of understand the full scope of the conversation. So to start off, so why are we here tonight? So, the Commission, as part of the biennium budget process, set goals. One of those goals is Commission Goal Number Two, to address critical facility needs. Two of them related to Parks Deferred Maintenance and Operations. One, to develop future revenue options for long-term maintenance of city parks and recreation facilities. And two, to continue to increase funding to address deferred maintenance for city parks and recreation facilities. So with that, we were directed to go out and find the information on our deferred maintenance backlog, as well as do a review of the operations of our Parks and Recreation Department. So first, we're going to identify the need. So in going through and researching and running the numbers, it was very clear as we started to go through that we had two kind of major needs and concurrent needs. We have one for ongoing funding for Parks and Recreation operations. You can think of that as the people out in the field doing the work, the supplies that they need to do the work. So if they're repairing irrigation systems, or they're laying bark dust, or they're mowing lawns, those are the general operations of our facilities, cleaning restrooms, those are operations. Then we have our capital reinvestment needs. So think of that as our deferred maintenance backlog. So anything that is a physical structure that is not in operational order, or is not to the level that the general community expects when they come to one of our parks, so anything that is, you know, shifting sidewalks, or playground equipment that is broken and damaged, anything like that would be a capital need, capital reinvestment, as we go through the conversation. And the reason we set it up this way is that the funding mechanisms for operations versus the funding mechanisms for capital are a little bit different, and so we'll have to look at it a little bit of a different way as we're going through this process. So to start off, we're going to do a department overview. We have 36 parks and facilities. Of that, we have developed parks and open spaces, trails and linear parks, the Mountain View Cemetery, which is a little different, so as we're looking through especially some of the comps, for national comps, for how we maintain parks and facilities, operating an active cemetery is a little bit different than, you know, going and operating a park facility. So it requires a little bit different focus. The Clackman RV Park's a little bit different as well. Facilities, we have the Pioneer Center, the Oregon City Pool, then the Oregon Trail, Irma Tinger House, and then we have our recreational programs, camps, the summer concerts, moving the park events, and then facility maintenance. So we are housed the facility maintenance department. We maintain all of the Parks and Recreation facilities, as well as a number of the citywide facilities, including City Hall, the library, the Police Department facilities. So a picture of a couple of the parks, and just gives you an idea of what we maintain. So again, when you're thinking of Parks and Recreation, often it's, you think of lawn area, or mowing grass, but we're also maintaining physical structures, roofing systems, you know, irrigation lines, water lines. We have a lot of paved surfaces, whether it's trails, or parking lots, or athletic grounds. And additionally, just some of the fun things that we do out in our system. So the department structure, I'm the Community Services Director, responsible for the Parks and Recreation Services. We have four managers within our department, Assistant Director Denise Conrad, and then we have a supervisor for our Pioneer Community Center, and our Aquatic Recreation Supervisor, and additionally, a manager for our Parks and Cemetery Operations, Jonathan Waverly. And so we'll focus primarily in that section as we're going through this conversation. So within the Parks and Cemetery operations, we have some admin support positions, and then what we're really going to be talking about is the Park and Cemetery Maintenance, those 8.55 FTE. So staffing levels and responsibilities. So for Oregon City Parks, we have six full-time park maintenance specialists. And during the summer season, when it gets busier, we bring in five, typically five seasonal park maintenance positions. That equates to 2.55 FTE, full-time equivalent. We operate, again, 36 parks and approximately 296 acres of parkland. That equates to 34.6 acres per FTE, which is, which is a pretty high number. So the next numbers that you'll see there is looking at a national study conducted by National Recreation and Park Association, which looked at comparable agencies, both in Parks maintained, population serviced, and the acres of parks maintained. So looking at the FTE for Oregon City compared to the median, and again, these are median numbers, not high-end numbers, these are median numbers, would be 16 FTE would be required in order to align with the median agency. And then shifting to the facility maintenance needs, so we have 1.5 FTE in Oregon City Parks and Recreation. That one FTE is Ann Crandall, who was our Employee of the Year this year, and does a fantastic job maintaining our 225,000 square feet of rentable square footage, and that's the standard used by the industry to measure the square footage maintained as a number. We have 353,000 roughly square feet, including shop buildings and mausoleums. Looking again at the industry standards for facilities maintained, approximately 1 FTE per 47,000 square feet. That would equate to adding an additional three FTEs to meet the maintenance standard level. So this is, again, just a little chart to show where we're at. Again, 8.55 FTE for park maintenance, and 1.5 for facility maintenance. We're working at a deficit of seven and a half full-time staff members for parks, and 3.3 full-time staff members for facility maintenance. So we're going to shift now to, that's kind of the operations side of where we're at, and we're going to shift now to the capital side, looking at the physical structures that we maintain and how they're maintained. So these are some current condition photos of parks within our system. The photo on the left is a waterboard park trail going through the park. You'll notice some of the shifting and cracking that's happening there. The photo on the right is a picture of, it's a little older, it's when the damage occurred, but a photo of Park Place Park. We have since buttoned it up using plywood, but because of the age of the equipment, we don't have a manufacturer that's willing to accept the liability of putting other equipment on to that piece of play equipment. So we have a playground that is beyond its life cycle for replacement, and in need of additional resources in order to have an active playground that folks can use on a regular basis. So if you go there right now, you'll see just a plywood board in front of each of the openings, as opposed to the tube that used to be there for children to climb through. Picture on the left here is of asphalt pathway running between Clackmit Park and John Storm Park. You'll notice the shifting of the asphalt roots coming through from the nearby trees, pretty typical of a lot of our asphalt pathway systems within the parks. It's challenging for folks with mobility issues, and can be a trap hazard even for those that don't have issues. Photo on the right is of one of our newer parks, and well-loved parks at Wesley Lynn. The park shelter there gets a lot of use, heavy use during the summer season, and even on the either end in the spring and the fall. But even our newer parks, and again, we say newer, you know, 10, 12, 15 years old parks, need some additional support as well. A lot of the tile coming off on that shelter there. So this is the number that we're looking at. Again, with your packet, you received two different spreadsheets. One for our Parks Deferred Maintenance list, and it was broken down by each facility, so each park had a running total, and then the total, again, coming to 23.5 million, and then our facility deferred maintenance at 3.9 million as the other spreadsheet. These numbers were done internally, using industry standard numbers for dollar per linear foot, square foot, looking at other projects that we have done, either by ourselves or in combination with Public Works. Some of the numbers, a couple of them honestly were just grabs, and so looking at the needs for Waterboard Park replacement, there's a million-dollar figure there. That is a total just number deposited there, because it could be, it needs a lot of engineering work, and it could be, something looks totally different than that when we're done. So the other numbers, again, are looking at industry standards and very specific numbers. The facilities deferred maintenance, as you're looking through it, there was a prioritization scheduled, it was given for a couple of the buildings. So looking at the parks, I'm sorry, looking at the pool and the Pioneer Center, had a 1 through 10, or 1 through 15, listing of the deferred maintenance project lists, whereas the End of the Oregon Trail facility was not done in that same way. That facility needs a lot of work, and the approach that was taken was to look at, again, one time in, one time out, to make the best use of funds for the community. And so instead of doing, you know, pulling the exterior sheathing off, and doing insulation, and doing mechanicals, and putting it back, and then pulling it off again to do other things, it'd be a one time in, one time out on that project. So looking, diving into the numbers just a little bit, on the parks piece, if you were to break it down by area, just a different way of looking at it. Playgrounds, roughly 3.1 million. Walking trails, 3.3 million. Parking lots and roads, 2.8. And structures, 2 million. The structures is primarily looking at just the shelters and restrooms, not necessarily the other physical buildings that we maintain, so it's not mausoleums. In our cemetery, you're not looking at the End of the Oregon Trail, structures are in the facilities budget. The other items there would be, at the 11.2 million, would be irrigation systems, drainage issues, anything else that, again, doesn't fit within one of those other areas. And again, just another way to look at it, at the numbers. Facilities, we kind of already ran through. So now that we know kind of where we're at, we know what the needs are, both with our operational needs and our capital needs, we're going to go through some funding options, and how we might be able to pay for the operation and capital needs of the Parks and Recreation Department. So one way that the Commission could choose to move forward is to adjust the permanent tax rate to be used for Parks and Recreation Services. This is an approach that was used several years back, when looking at the Police Department, and adjusted 25 cents per thousand on the permanent rate. Oregon City currently sits at roughly 65 cents under the permanent tax rate limit, and so there is capacity there. This would be done during the time of the budget setting process, so as you go into the budget biennium, if you so choose, could move forward with a rate adjustment up to the permanent tax rate limit. Again, and be used for our numbers here, 25 cents as kind of our base point for our numbers moving forward. Benefits of having general fund support as a funding source is that it's a stable funding source for park operations. It would be there on an annual basis for continuing operations. Challenge is that it would be a general fund and subject to shifting priorities, so if the Commission so chooses, at any point could reallocate funds to be used for some other use other than parks. General Obligation Bond, GO bond, this could be used for, again, land acquisition, capital projects, it's not to be used for operations and maintenance. So this would be only an option to be used for our capital or deferred maintenance backlog, not for our operations, for staff, or ongoing projects. It has been a successful mode of providing revenue for Parks and Recreation Departments within the state of Oregon, at 61% over the last few years. Recent bonds that have passed, Eugene just passed one this year, a couple others in the metro area, Bend and Willamalein, and down in Springfield, Oregon. Benefits, again, it is available for capital projects. Challenges, it cannot contribute to operational needs at all. So again, this is just the one side of the portfolio. Local Option Levy, so this is an opportunity to do either for operations or for maintenance, or, I'm sorry, or for capital. And so you could do either a operations levy as one item, or a capital levy as another item. They cannot be used the same levy for both purposes. So if this was the direction the Commission chose to move forward with, you could do one or the other, or you could, in theory, do both at the same time, but they would be separate levies. It is subject to compression, so that is something to consider. It's outside the permanent tax rate of the city, but subject to the combined rate limit under Measure Five. A couple of recent levies that have passed, Eugene just passed one this year, in combination with their bond that they passed, they also passed a levy. Hillsborough passed one in 17, Metro, as most people are aware, and then Corvallis has passed one recently. Again, the benefits, it's flexible, can be used for either. Public vote would be needed for ongoing support, so this is something the Commission would have to send forward to the vote of the people. Park Utility Fees, fee paid on a regular utility bill specific to Parks and Recreation. There are other jurisdictions that use park utility fees to provide services to their communities. We did conduct a statistically valid survey as part of the 2008 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, in which 76% of the respondents in Oregon City indicated they would pay some type of park utility fee. So there is some information there. Benefits, it's stable and dedicated, so it could only be used, dedicated funds for Parks and Recreation use. Challenges, the possible perception of adding additional utility fee. As you know, there are other utility fees that are out there in the community currently being used for the city. And then Parks District, this would be a total flip of how we do business. So this would be creating a special park district, it would not be associated in any form with the city in an official capacity, beyond signing MOUs or IGAs as a totally separate government agency. So this would be sent to a vote of the people, to incorporate municipal corporation as a taxing authority. They'd have their own taxing authority, their own elected Board of Directors. Examples of special park districts, Towelton Hills and Beaverton, Bend Parks and Recreation, which, it doesn't bend, and Willamalein, Parks and Recreation District in Springfield, Oregon, are three of the larger parks districts in the state. Benefits, again, targeted focus on Parks and Recreation. One of the challenges with this would be, it's a standalone Parks District, and would lose some efficiencies of operating within the larger umbrella of a city. There are opportunities, as you're aware, having other parks, or having other special districts that we interact with as a city. There are opportunities for collaboration and cooperation, but it is a shift, and it is a little bit different than working regularly within departments. So looking at the two different umbrellas, again, operations on one side, and capital needs on the other. Funding options available for, providing for operations, the options that we went through just recently, the permanent tax rate adjustment, the park utility fee, and the local option levy. The special district, again, because it would be dependent upon the permanent tax rate set and other information, we have no rate information or revenue information to share. But looking at, we use the 25 cents as a starting point for the revenue that would be created through that, roughly $700,000 per year would be created with a 25 cent annual adjustment on the permanent tax rate. With that, the typical assessed value of $300,000 of a home would bring in, would cost them $6.25 per month. And so, very similar numbers for the local option levy. The local option levy, again, is a limited duration, so that would be a five-year, and then needing to go back out to a vote of the people after five years. That can be challenging, especially with operations, as you're hiring staff and ramping up, and not knowing whether or not you will have continued funding source in order to provide the services that the community begins to expect with that. The park utility fee would be slightly less per month, so you'd be looking at $4.15 per month for a park utility fee. The difference between that and the other two options, again, is that you're paying per household. So per customer, paying that dollar amount, as opposed to a very, a little bit of a variable amount with the assessed tax value of the homes under a permanent tax rate, or a local option levy. So some folks will pay a little bit more, some folks will pay a little bit less. With the park utility fee, everyone would pay the same amount, and again, it would be a dedicated funding source that would continue, as opposed to a local option levy that would need to be voted on again in five years. Looking at the capital needs on the other side, so again, this is looking at the deferred maintenance backlog. Couple of different options that are available. Local Option Levy, for the local option levy, for a capital levy, we have up to 10 years to use those funds. And so, instead of the five-year for the operational levy, the capital levy is a 10-year. That would equate to roughly $24.50 per month, looking at funding the entire deferred maintenance backlog list. If we were to do a general obligation bond, again, that's a 20-year bond, the rate of 76 cents per thousand would bring, again, the 27.4 million into one-time funds to be used, which would all be available at the same time, and then it would be $18.98 per month. So again, the 10-year versus 20-year in those first two options, the benefit of the local option levy as opposed to the general obligation bond is that we're not going to be paying interest on those funds. And so it is, you know, obviously, a little bit more expensive, but as far as the total number of dollars paid out, it is actually cheaper to do the option levy, because the interest occurred in the obligation bond. The other piece that would be an option would be the park utility fee of $16.20 per month. Again, that would be a standalone park utility fee for capital, that would not be including the operations side on the other side that we talked about before. So if it was of interest to move forward in funding both the operations and the capital using a park utility fee, you would need to merge those numbers in order to provide the same level of service that we're talking about for both of those opportunities. And then the special district, again, that would be creating a full, new, separate form of government. They would still need to go through each of the consideration for the funding options, they would just need to happen as that government agency, looking at levies, or bonds, or utility fees. So we've internally, as staff, spent a lot of time discussing these numbers, and going through the options, and what is feasible, and what is reasonable, and what is, you know, the best way forward in order to provide those services. And with that, have come up with a recommendation to start the conversation. I'm sure the Commission and committee members have a lot of information to share, and we could go forward, again, in any number of options that we've laid out here thus far. This is just a starting point for the conversation. So, recommendation, again, a best path forward, as we've gone through these numbers, would be to have the Commission approve a 25 cent permanent tax rate adjustment to be used for Parks and Facility operations. Again, this is something that could be done through the budget process in the beginning of this next year. The result of that 25 cent permanent tax rate adjustment would be to hire five park maintenance positions. We're at a 7.5 deficit, so that would still not quite bring us up to the median for the national average, and we would hire on one facility maintenance position to bring us up closer to aligning to where our needs are. In addition to those positions, it would, it would fund the additional needed materials, transportation tools, equipment, things like that, in order to provide those services. On the other side, so this is operations, and on the other side for capital, the recommendation, again, would be to look at a capital local option levy. This gives us a couple of benefits over some of the other options that we did talk about. The local option levy, we're not paying interest on those funds. It could be done over a 10-year period, so we could look at, again, prioritization of the facilities and of the parks, and make sure that we're addressing them in an effective manner. It would also allow us to not have to hire on as many administrative or support staff in order to create these projects. And so, you know, the backend of any capital project is, you know, the staff time required to review the materials and produce the work, and supervise the contracts, and make sure that you have boots on the ground, to make sure the work's happening appropriately. And so we would, that would allow us to kind of space out the projects, and make sure that we have appropriate dedicated staff time, and that we're doing it in an effective manner. So if that was approved by the Commission, and sent to a vote of the people, and approved by the voters, staff would then work on planning and delivering the capital projects to address the Park and Recreation Deferred Maintenance backlog over that 10-year period. So with that, options for next steps. So of course, all the options that we talked about are available to the Commission, to the committee. Option one could be that we, you know, this is something, the recommendation is something that is supported, and we could move forward with developing a timeline and work plan for implementation of the preferred option. Option two would be, we can move forward with an alternate recommendation of this group. Or option three would be to research additionally, come back with more information, continue to have the conversation. So with that, I will open it up to questions, comments, and be happy to go back to any of the slides that we moved through to discuss in more detail. Questions?
Could we go back to the slide that showed what the different levies could and could not support?
Yeah. So is this the one you were thinking of?
Yep.
And so the local option levy, again, we have two different ways to approach this. You could do an operations levy for staff and ongoing operations, or you could do the 10-year capital levy for the projects and deferred maintenance backlog.
Ms. Mayor?
So the, the average, let's say the Commission goes forward with what you've recommended. That average person with the $300,000 home, what's their total cost every month for their sharing, on the levy and the extra 25 cent bump? sharing, on the levy and the extra 25 cent bump in the tax rate?
So they would pay $6.25 per month in the operational through the permanent tax rate, and so 31, 30 bucks?
24, yeah, $31 a month.
Yes.
So follow-on question about that, in looking at both your capital and your operations, it looks like the park utility is the least burden per customer, so I'm curious as to why you didn't recommend using that for either of the options.
Maybe I'll defer to that. Sit me on a chair.
We had a lot of discussion about that. It did come out very high as one of the options. I think that we're just sensitive to the two utility fees that we currently have in place related to the pavement maintenance utility fee, which is up over a little over $13 per month, and then the police facility fee, which is $6.50 a month. There's been a lot of discussion when that was put in and as it relates to, the commission has the authority to implement fees. Whether that should be sent to a vote as an advisory or not, it was one of the things that we were sensitive to in bringing this forward. I do agree that if we, when we set these utility fees up, we modeled it after the police fee model, where it was a set amount and it was applicable equitably across all residents and businesses. So that was the model that we used. But I just think just the sensitivity and to implementing additional fees on top of the two that we currently have was one concern that we had in bringing it forward. I do agree that it, it's a very good model. I think it's that this is more of a policy, political decision from that, so that's why.
Thank you.
All right.
Would the utility, the park utility fee sunset, or would that just be forever?
I think that if you were looking at a operational utility fee, you would, that would be something that would be implemented for the foreseeable future. If you're looking at a capital utility fee, that's probably something you would want to look at sunsetting at some point. You know, there will always be capital needs as you're maintaining capital investments in facilities, but, you know, in theory, once we get up to maintaining parks as opposed to in the deferred status, it wouldn't be needed, especially at that level.
Okay, what about the additional levy? If we levied our amount, you said that would be, that, those funds would go into the general fund? Can they be restricted just for parks, or is that just, is that something that's not allowed through?
Levy funds would be dedicated for parks and recreation use.
They could be?
I think, hold on, hold on, you're talking about two different things. So if you increase the permanent rate, that cannot be, a future commission could change their priorities and take that money and use it for something else.
Right, okay. But, but, but would it go into the general fund, the permanent rate increase? It would go into the, you couldn't say that we want to put that into restricted funds for parks?
No, it would go into the general.
Well, you could say it, it's just that a future commission could change it.
I understand that.
There was somebody got that?
Yeah, the question I had, since we're doing deferred maintenance, and said the commission attempt to go for a local option levy for 10 years. I presume some of our deferred maintenance would be lessened over that process, so, and you probably still have to go for another levy like most jurisdictions do, but it could potentially be less, you've dealt with a lot of your deferred maintenance already.
So this would be a, again, the 27.4 million is a snapshot of deferred maintenance at this point. So over the 10 years, we will address, you know, those deferred maintenance needs, and I'm sure we would probably have other items that would shift into deferred maintenance status. And at that point, if the commission so chooses, could choose to go out for, you know, a lesser levy or choose to wait and go out at a later time. But in theory, the current deferred maintenance list would be addressed through that operational levy over the 10 years.
Mr. Shaw?
So I've always been at the retreats and our annual, biannual budget meetings and stuff, I've always been kind of trumpeting the Parks and Rec Department to get more funds for them, and it got to a point where I think I even asked some of the departments to make a little change there to give more money to parks, but one of the policemen actually grabbed me one day and wanted to know, he was happy to hear that I was willing to trade teeter totters for police cars. And so I always had this concern for this, I was kind of astounded at the number, but we've always been kind of anxious to see this. Now we're not so anxious, you know, now that we've seen the thing, so, but I appreciate the work you've done here, Phil. My problem is that we're just looking at deferred maintenance now, and the maintenance is going to go on, continue with the south side of this, you know, and who knows that that number's going to go around? So for me, I know I don't really have a problem with getting the 25 cent tax rate on that. And the other part of that is, you know, I always thought that, and I hate to use that fee, but it was all kind of, it was kind of a natural thing because that gets everybody. And everybody uses the police, everybody uses our streets, everybody uses our parks. And that's why the fees seem to be the most fair. But I think the voters need to be involved with this, and if we do the fee, they're not involved, unless we do that or do we require, or can we?
You certainly could, you could certainly send it to the voters if you so choose.
So let me just say right now, I wouldn't do either one of these without sending it out to a vote.
I agree.
Oh yeah, no, that's correct. I agree with, we've kind of gone down that path here, so. So that's, and I'm also thinking about, do we have too much inventory here? You know, do we bring, and I hate to think about this, but, you know, we've got to face the issue here that $27 million, and do we, do we have too many? What's that, what's our park number per resident, Phil, versus a national basis? You know, where are we as far as our number, our parks acreage versus the national level?
We have a couple of different metrics that we use, so one of them is, you know, in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan is looking at the, you know, and probably the more important metric is location within walking distance of a park. And so we have, we have quite a few parks, and we have quite a few smaller parks than a lot of other communities have, which is a good thing to an extent. It has challenges in that park staff have to travel from location to location, unload, reload. The benefit is that we have more parks within walkable distance of folks' houses, but we still have a lot of the, a lot of those parks are typically in the older sections of town. And so when you're looking at service areas, particularly in the newer parts of the city, we still have quite a few park deficient areas of town that have, some of them have, you know, spaces that will be future parks. Some of them don't have any park identified to be built within a walkable distance, which is measured within a half-mile distance of every household. And so I think that's probably the better way to approach and to look at how we're providing parks, as opposed to looking at the acres per individual within the city.
Again, the other question from is, SDCs only pay for purchasing parks?
Capital.
Capital purchasing.
Capital, and it's capacity building. And so it'd be adding parks or adding capacity within parks. So it could be, you know, adding or building out a new park, purchasing the land, building the new park out. It could also be adding capacity in, you know, the amount of time used at a park. So if we added, you know, lighting, as an example, to be able to extend the hours that a park is usable, that could be an option.
Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I wanted to comment on some of you said in terms of the number of parks and so on. I think it was about, I want to say 13 years ago or so, we put a vote to the people to sell the pocket parks. It went down by a huge percentage.
I know.
So people like those parks.
I know, and I, it's, you know, we love them too, we all want them, but I'm just looking at this number here and I'm trying to figure out how we can get it manageable, so.
If I could just follow up on what Mr. Neely said a little bit earlier. You're correct, in turn, the way we were looking at this was that we have this existing number that we know. And whether it's using a parks utility fee or a 10-year capital levy, I think that, you know, when you get towards the end of that 10-year planning horizon that we look at, you do go back and reassess, you know, and hopefully, we do this correctly, we deliver the product, we say we're going to deliver it, then you can go back and that number should be lower. There will be a number, though. So, you know, we have an approach to this from, oh, after 10 years, this all goes away, we're fine. We will have additional costs over the next 10 years that we will then need to address again. So we would still need to identify a way to address that, whether that's to go back and say, we can reduce the operational, the capital levy request from 27 million, and I'm making up a number, to let's say 10 million, you can cut it in half, or the parks fee gets reduced because that outstanding deferred maintenance liability will be reduced, but we still will have one and trying to identify a long-term funding source for that.
Ms. Moore?
You know, most of my experience with this is too many years of watching the library ebb and flow, and levies that get absorbed, and levies that expire, and commissions that change their priorities. I like the fee because you know that as long as it's collected, that's where it's going to go. You know, voting on it, I understand it's unpopular, but, or, you know, going on the bill is not going to be pleasant, so I think voting on it isn't a bad idea, but I think that that would be the safe, to me, it's the safest way to go. It guarantees that money will always be there for park operations. Normally, I don't like levies from that same experience, but the 10-year capital levy makes good sense, and at the end of 10 years, you'll have new needs, but you have time to pass another levy. It's not make or break on a single election and laying off half your staff if you went with the levy for operations.
Mr. Decker?
I want to look at this from two standpoints. One, the fee or the 24 cents makes sense for an operating, an operating point, and I don't care about either one, preferably, I like the fee, I know it's a political hot potato. Looking at the longer-term operation, or excuse me, the capital side, obviously, I'm a park supporter because I'm here, but you can't be the last person at the trough asking for money. And right now, Metro's taking me for every dime every year, they keep bringing more money, the school district's going to probably take more money this fall, and so I'm concerned about that. And where that takes me next is what the school district did to get where they are now, is they analyzed, I thought this was an interesting methodology, they analyzed where they were at and they thought they needed 180 million, but they went out and surveyed the public, and the public didn't care whether they were asking, according to the survey, didn't care whether they were asking for 180 or 220. So in other words, why would we ask for 27 when maybe 35 is the right answer and we build a new pool? Or something of that nature. So I would like to see this done in two stages. One, you fix the operations side sooner than later, and then where you look at the capital side at a long-term approach, well-thought-out, less political capital for the commission because you've put it out to a survey, you've had people come in here and explained to us what's better. I remember 10 or 15 years ago, we looked through the pool and, you know, now I'm surprised that there's only half a million dollars of maintenance in it, but at one point, it was, should we tear it down and rebuild it? And maybe those times are now, and maybe the, it seems like if you're going to put these things out there, the public needs to have a little bit of a cherry to buy off on to spend 30 million or 27 million dollars. So what are those cherries you put in front of them?
Well, we've just, over the last couple of years, we've put a lot of money in the pool. So, you know, I would be hesitant to, after spending that money, say, well, let's just go out and build a new pool.
It could be a large pool expansion. There's a number of things, but you're not going to get the public to vote for $27 million worth of capital improvements and say $10 million of those are plumbing. I don't see that happening. Where in, looking at the school district standpoint, they're saying they're going to fix security, and we all know security is a problem in every school in America. They've hit the number one thing. Number two, they're going to take the worst building, tear it down and rebuild it. What do we have to show for $27 million? 10 million in plumbing? That's not going to get a voter.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got it.
Troy?
I agree with Sean. I was on the school board at the time, we did that, and we did the survey, but where we got a lot of those answers was we went out in the public, we talked to them, and we presented essentially the same idea of, here's a couple of options, here's what we're thinking, here's our recommendation, and we were shocked when we opened it for questions and answers. They said, why, this is not enough. And they said, go back and find some more. And so the reason we came up, the number we came up with, was because they told us very clearly, you're not spending enough money. Not in those terms, what they really said is you're not delivering enough. And we said, well, it's going to cost more, and they said, well, yeah, we know. And so to your point, I think there is value in before we put it to a vote, going out in the community and saying, here's the two options. We could do a fee, we could put it to vote, and here's what we're thinking is going to get you, what do you think? And listen to our people. And then when the people speak, then we know what we're going, we know the answer we're going to get in the ballot, after they've told us the answer we're going to get when it reaches the ballot.
I also agree. I have concerns on both options. The tax rate adjustment, I think the current commission has the best intentions. My concern would be long-term and what that money would be reallocated for when the next big priority comes up. It happens all the time, and right or wrong, it could happen. Long-term for the capital expenditure, I think one of the big questions you're going to get from the public and the voters is, how did it get so bad? Why did we, how did we get here? And so now you're asking us to come back and pay for this big deficit budget to catch up. And then another question that's going to come up is, with all the new development going on right now and the lack of parks in those areas, how are you going to fund those? How are you going to take care of those? Your O and M budget that you're asking for is not enough to keep up with the national standard. How are you going to keep up with these new parks? So those are some of the questions I think are going to pop up through the conversations.
And really quickly, just to the couple of the points that have been made, so the list that is here is literally the deferred maintenance list. So this is a replacing like-for-like where we're at in deferred maintenance status. So to Troy's point and to Sean's point, this would not be, you know, going out and reimagining parks or, you know, building new fancy different things than are currently there. This would be literally replacing like-for-like. And if it were, you know, to the commission's judgment to move forward in any capacity, to look at a different number, look at other options of building out, you know, we could move forward in a different way as well.
Anybody else? Fisher Magelberg?
I'd be interested to hear from Mr. Lewis, the results of the recent survey of the community and kind of summarize what they said about parks and what they were willing to support, and just give us a little bit more.
October 7th. We're not quite done with the community survey yet.
I tried to take that thing, it's brutal. It's like 20 minutes long. Go ahead.
I mean, I agree with Troy and Sean. I think it would be, I think it would be an easier sell to say, here's what we need, and we're going to do all of the, with this maintenance. and we're going to do all of the, with this maintenance and we're going to do these new things, whatever the community says those priorities are. Um, to just, you know, I, I relate it to my own house. I'd love doing home improvement. I hate doing home repair because I, I'm not anywhere ahead. So we're going to ask people to spend all this money on park repair and they're not getting anything new. So I, I think politically it might be easier to get a little more money with whatever the community wants for something new. Um, and the other thing, and this is, this is a question that I have, um, I agree on the park utility fee, that's dedicated money, but couldn't that infamous future commission say, you know what, parks has their own fee, we're going to cut their general fund allocation?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to get that out there.
Or they could stop the fee. Or they could stop the fee.
Sure. Right, nothing is guaranteed.
Nothing's guaranteed, yeah.
Right, okay, just wanted to get it out there.
So I'm going to, um, take the last shot here unless somebody else has something else. Okay, um, one, it frustrates me to no end that we get to this point of having $25 million worth of deferred maintenance. And that gets on, you know, our former city manager and former commissioners going back 20-some years, um, that didn't take care of the stuff we have. And, and Tony knows, I, you know, I harp on, you know, if there's something broken on one of these buildings, let's fix it before it turns into having to replace the siding or, you know, fixing a whole parking lot or whatever the case may be. So, you know, I'm, I'm a big one about let's do the maintenance. Um, but in any case, I wouldn't go for either one of these options without putting it out to, to the voters in general. Um, I think the police levy or the police fee and the, uh, park maintenance fee, which is, was done well before I was mayor, those both do impact pretty much every citizen in, in the city. Uh, I, I think that there is a percentage of people.
Police and police, the police utility fee was not done when, before we were mayor.
Hmm?
We didn't do the police utility fee under, when I was mayor.
I said, I was talking about the pavement maintenance utility fee.
I thought you mentioned, oh, okay.
But my point is, is that, is that, um, while everyone here is passionate about parks, there is a percentage of this, of the citizenry in Oregon City don't use parks. So we, you know, we have to take that portion of the citizenry into consideration and give them an option to weigh in on how we're going to fund these things. Um, so I'm just putting that out there. Obviously, there's a lot of discussions still to be had, um, and, you know, this was just a work session to give us the, the bare bones and, and we'll move forward and, uh, see how this works out in the next few months. Anything else? I guess, is there, what, what would, is it beneficial to have both groups meeting together? Is that something we would like to do again?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Is there something that we can focus on to bring back or is this something you just want to think about till we meet again? Well, I think that, I think the key to the, a utility fee is education. Because I think if you, if, if I get somebody one-on-one and explain to them that, you know, instead of you, Mr. Property Taxpayer, paying $6.25, we put this fee on your water bill, it's, it's two, it's a third less than, than your property tax increase, but the guy who's renting a house or the county's building or the Ford dealership or whoever, they're all paying that too. People understand that and they'll go for that. It's just when it shows up on their bill and they haven't had any opportunity to weigh in, that's what gets people angry. So I think if we had a, a, an education campaign and, and put it out and use Kristin and, and, and did a, a fairly long, maybe a six-month social media campaign explaining what we're trying to do, um, I think we could get a positive vote on that. I think that any one of these we choose needs an educational component to it. Right, but, so I'd say let's come back in, um, what, this is September, let's come back in November. Um, you guys, you know, maybe flesh us out a little bit more and, and some ideas working with Kristin on how we might communicate, had different messages for different, the, the different options.
Is, is there any option that you're, you don't want us to spend any more time on?
Parks district. That's a non-starter.
Is there consensus on that?
I also think the general obligation bond is less attractive than some of the other options.
Yeah, I, as far as I'm concerned, we're down at two.
Okay, that helps.
I think it'd be nice to have a third in though. We're going to go to the community and show them the options, let's show them the options, and I think they'll all realize that that's not the most attractive option, which helps our case when we're bringing them everything.
So put, so put the geo-bond on there, but, you know, obviously it's unlikely that we will go that direction.
Sure.
Okay, is there any other additional information or just let us go back and we'll talk about it some more and kind of address some of the comments that we heard and come back to you with that. There's no specific ask.
What do you think you can come back with, Tony? I mean, that we haven't kind of covered. Where I'm going is, is it time to kind of get a, we kind of just knew, we kind of, we made the criteria kind of just now. Is it time to get kind of a little focus group or something here of the public and, and start sifting this out a little bit? Because I think you're going to come back and we're going to say the same thing. I, I think what, what I was asking for was to get the communication side.
Right.
So all we've, all we have is the raw information. I'd like a strategy from staff about how we're going to do the education piece, how we're going to communicate, whatever it is, and, and what those strategies might look like, whether it's a, a local option levy or the fee.
I think once we have, and, and, you know, to apologize, that is certainly, you know, the next step, you know? If this group comes to consensus and whatever that may be is the public education component, and so we can certainly work on that and come back with some ideas on how we could address that. But I, well, I kind of wanted consensus here on a good way to step forward because honestly, I'm going to need, you know, the support of everyone around this dais on whatever we decide to do, uh, to move forward.
Well, obviously, you, you hear the consensus that we're going to send this out to a vote. So, you know, you're, one of those strategy questions is going to be, do you go in, in March or May or September or November of next year?
Certainly. So I think we've got our marching orders.
All right, very much.
Then we're adjourned. Come back in about five minutes.
Okay, sorry.